Let the chant of worship begin, open prayers. Guche. Please open prayers.
Name of the Father, and Son, and God. Our Lord and our Savior, because this is the day you are made, and we have reason to rejoice in the name of God. We thank you, God, because you have given us the great gift of Supremity and Accumbation. And, Father, we are here, voting of glory, to interact with you, to your testimonies, to be able to pilot the affairs of the state for the next four years, starting from next year. We ask, oh, God, that you endure our challenge, with the caution, with the grace, and all of us, with understanding of the times like this, so that we are able to take the right decisions and move forward. The covenant is gathered with the blood of Jesus Christ, and our others here in name will be glorified. At the time we spend here, we can't count the thanks to the glory of their believing. We know that you are a chart, be exalted in our gathering. Thank you, Father, for your Jesus' name and prayer. Amen.
Distinguished chairman of this occasion, past president of Enugu Chamber of Commerce, Industries and Agriculture, established leader of mayor, and manager of materials, Saro Omato, distinguished candidate of the People's Democratic Party in the 2023 election, and his running mate, Vidiu Akap. Distinguished past president of Esima, especially the pre-reverend, Ugo Chieme, who we practically know this building too. Members of council of Esima, including the deputy presidency and present, distinguished members of the dedication of the candidates, members of Ekoba, especially the vice president of Ekoba, Architect Eka Jezuwo, members of the fourth estate of the realm, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. We bid you welcome to Esima House. We also bid the candidate and his entourage a very resounding welcome to the premises of Enugu Chamber of Commerce, Industries and Agriculture. So, Esima is the umbrella body of the organized private sector in Enugu, and Ekoba is our advertising hub. Ekoba stands for Enugu Coalition of Business and Professional Associations. So you are sure that every facet of the business and professional community is well represented in this hall. You will be glad to note that not only do we have members from NUJ, Nigerian Association, we also have members from National Union of Road Transport Workers. We also have members from the National Association of Small-Scale Industries. So you see, in this hall, you have representatives of practically every aspect of business life in Enugu. The purpose of this town hall meeting is to afford you the opportunity to meet with us and allay our fears as to how we will solve some of the issues of concern if you win the mandate to occupy the Lion Building. I need to understand, sir, that questions asked in the course of this program are the opinion of the individuals and will not represent the collective perspective of Esima and Ekoba. Where they're interested nonetheless, your plans for ease of doing business in Enugu State, which I am sure you will address, who count on members of the audience to cooperate with us and maintain the code, if for nothing else, so that we can hear the candidate's heart. We will study the idea of a town hall meeting proper at this time, so we can relate with candidates and build an understanding prior to the occupation of the government house by one of them. What we are doing is a little expensive for a non-governmental organization like us, but we have to see it too as our contribution to the well-being and running of society. Apart from corporate by the regular media, we are streaming live on the 92.5 FM, we are streaming live on Facebook, and we are streaming live on Zoom. And this is to give the candidate maximum coverage possible. It is expensive, yes, but we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to Enugu State. Many thanks for your attention, and I wish Paris Number and his running mates good luck. You're welcome.
Honorable Barista B., the candidate of Philippine, Enugu State, I welcome you, your running mate, Barista Fine, your side, you welcome too. And all the people that came with them, I want to welcome you to Esima House. Our president has already given his welcome address, and we are gathered in this town, at this meeting, to listen to the good candidate of Philippine to tell us what he has in stock for the state, where business people will represent business community. And we are still good at the town, or in the state. Nobody should try to neglect us or ignore us by any means. The government's main duty for us is to provide an environment for our businesses to thrive. That's what they should do. And when we talk about the environment, we're talking about first of all, providing infrastructure for us to do our business, providing security for us to be able to operate. And then giving us a friendly taxation scheme, not double taxation. Because the special will do well, that the state will do well. The special will do well, that we'll be able to employ more people, and then unemployment rate will go low. The special will do well, that idea of the state will prove. The special will make money, that will pay more taxes. So it's important that whatever decision, that whoever that will be the next governor of Enugu State, will always consider us, the business community. We are very important, and we have a major and a very important role to play in economic development of the state. Honorable, I saw he has spoken, he says tomorrow is here. So he probably will tell us what that means. That's why we're here, we're here to listen to him. So he will explain to us what he means by tomorrow is here. Because they have got to say we serve to us, right? That's precisely why we're here. He wants to explain inside Jeddah, he wants to explain the manifest, the manifestive to us, so that we know who he is. First hand, not as I was told, we are going to listen to him, and he will talk to us. As the chairman of this occasion, I will go ahead and moderate answer and question section. Because we're going to ask a few questions after he has given our question, my first, after he has spoken to us. So ladies and gentlemen, please relax, and let's listen to him, and let him explain to us what he means by tomorrow is here. Thank you.
The incoming governor of, incoming deputy to governor of Enugu State, Barista Ivan Osan, president of Esima, and the chairman of this occasion. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, please, I believe that the president has already established the rule. We want to adopt the order of protocol that the president has already established. I am excited to be here today. My delight knows no bounds. The opportunity given to me by, what do you mean, Esima, to be here today is one that we feel honored and humbled by, and it is one that we do not take for granted. I believe that I'm here today to address members of my family. The Enugu Chamber of Commerce, Industry, Mines, and Agriculture is my family. Because in our veins run similar blood of business professionalism and the quest to promote a civic, commercial, and industrial progress of Enugu State. As you all know, our business roots are not so dissimilar. While Esima's growth is for a conducive business climate and the opportunity to drive entrepreneurial business here. I am a businessman and an investor who understands the value and the dividends that I drew from operating in a conducive business environment. So united in this common thread, we must partner together and work to solve the compelling challenges facing our state. The compelling business challenges that we need to solve in order to grow Enugu State's economy. I am not here to tell you what you do not already know about the larger picture of the Nigerian economic environment. The challenges before us are monstrous, but surmountable. We are faced today with existential threats of immense proportion, mainly arising from a polar state of our economy, rising insecurity, spiral inflation, and indeed the worsening global economic outbreak. I share your beliefs as business owners, and I have come here today to rouse you up. In the midst of this heart-throbbing news, however, is also the bigger picture that we must not lose sight of. It is a picture that can accrue if we collectively work together to ensure the economic growth of Enugu State. Enugu State today is standing on a threshold of history that would effectuate an unprecedented social-economic shift. And I'm here today to call on all of us to work together to ensure that Enugu State offers our dream. My purpose here today is for me to share, to come here and share my dream with Esima and indeed Ekoba. And I'm believing that partnering with you, we can make that dream in reality. We are desirous of growing our economy in a proportion that will pleasantly shock the bookmakers and the economic pundits. A few weeks ago, we laid bare before Ndidiyigu our social contract with them in what you now refer to as manifesto, and some refer to it as a statement of purpose. We committed in that document to achieve and deliver a people's-focused governance and to make Enugu State the preferred destination for investment, business, tourism, and living. We envisioned, and Enugu State, that the economy would grow from the correct state of 4.4 billion to 30 billion dollars. And at the same time, we want to achieve a zero percent rate in our poverty headcount index. This obviously is a major departure from the incremental growth of the marginal growth we experienced in the past. What that means is that in order for us to grow at this rate, we must grow exponentially. That means we must launch a quantum leap. We must look for the devices, we must look for the tools that would ensure we leap from this growth trajectory. That also means that we're going to do things radically differently. That means we're going to employ technology. And as you know, technologies are bundles of possibilities. So we're going to exceed technology in our growth plan. We have talked so much in our manifesto about a sector-based productivity growth. We've identified key sectors that will drive this growth. Now, we've looked at the commerce and industrial sector, and we've also identified a number of robust programs. As I said earlier, I am a businessman, so I understand the benefits of running businesses in Nigeria. I am also a CEO of a thriving company, and I understand how much time we spend in dealing with external factors, dealing with externalities. So those times that we would ordinarily spend in crafting strategies that would help us grow our business, we have to spend them in obtaining one benefit or the other, in obtaining one license or the other, massaging the eagles or the regulators, the public sector of workers. So I feel your pain, and I don't think anyone else could do better than being in terms of being able to, being able to identify with you. So our focus in the commerce and industry sector would be for us to de-risk investment flow and to ensure that we create the ease of doing business. And what are those indicators of the ease of doing business? There are largely four indicators, and of course, there are some sub-indicators. But these four indicators are for you to ensure the ease of setting up business, for you to ensure the ease of obtaining your construction permits, the ease of registering your property, and of course, the ease of enforcement of contracts. Now, looking at the sub-indicators, you will be talking about providing the enablement, the infrastructure, the security, the skills, and the labor. We are here to address those things because we understand your pain. And our job would be to ensure that we de-risk this. We are, if our mission is to ensure that Enugu is that preferred destination for businesses, then it means that we must attract those businesses, because businesses are not for that response. They won't return on their investments. A lot of the things we want to do are going to be system-based, but they are also going to be looked at sectorally. So if we pick the commerce and industry, we're going to be asking questions like, how do we de-risk investment flow? How do we ensure that we de-risk those challenges that businesses ordinarily have in order for them to set up? It may well be construction risk, it may also be finance risk or commercial risk. And that is where we would have to put in place structures like the public-private sector partnership. We're going to be asking hard and tough questions, because our interest is attracting businesses to Enugu and growing our economy. So we're going to be interested in discussing with business owners, prospective and those that are already sitting. Those that are already here with us will be interested in knowing, how do we ensure that we scale your production? How do we ensure that you increase your service level? And, and that's the role we want to play in governance. We want to be able to provide the enablement, we want to be able to make sure that if working with you, we will be able to decrease the commerciality of your business plan. We engage you, and we would provide you that environment, that enabling environment that allows the de-risking of the commerciality. If it is the construction risk that you are faced with as a business, we should be able to work with you to de-risk the construction risk, if it is the finance risk. So in our commerce and industry, there are a couple of strategic programs that we're going to set up. We're going to set up a hundred billion naira seed capital that will be revolving annually. This again speaks to de-risking finance, because we do know that we have people with great ideas, people who have created components that all they need is to make it a viable product. And we put common at that point, working with eventual capital fund. Again, most of these things that I said will be in conjunction with the private sector. Okay, we know that we have micro, small, medium-scale businesses, that the major which they have is access to finance. But they have the ideas, they have the plans, we'll work with them to de-risk those assets. And I'll just mention, just one program right now in supporting the MS Emmits. We could also do this in a number of ways. We're setting up an Enugu State Industrial Fund. Now, again, this fund will target those who want to set up industries here and may not have access to finance. We're going to work with them and see how they assess this fund. We want to also set up an incubation, an innovation incubation center. Again, this will target our young, talented youth who are tech savvy, who may have the brain but do not have the tools to develop this brain. So we're going to ensure that we have a center for them, where we'll provide 24/7 electricity, we're going to have water, we're going to have high-speed internet access. This will be a center where we're going to encourage our young people to explore their full potential. And again, the state benefits when they provide this center, because as you know, labor today is highly mobile. We would also encourage this young people, even from our location here, to offer services to people across our jurisdiction. There are indeed objectives in the commerce and industry sector will be to inject a lot of economic activities and create a lot of economic agents, and also grow our GDP. So the contribution of commerce and industry to our achievement will be enhanced. We are also talking about other key productivity sector. In our agriculture sector, we have coined it beyond agriculture, because we're not going to just be looking at agriculture. We'll be looking at agriculture and agro-industrial industry. Our hope is that agriculture plays a major contribution to our GDP. Currently, 40% of our GDP is through agricultural-related activities. So it is not a sector we can afford to coin with. So we have some strategic programs too that we have developed. And this is an area where we want to migrate from doing things manually or doing things through the pipeline to platforms. We're going to build, deploy technology to enhance our productivity in our agricultural sector. Our strategic programs in the agriculture sector would be to build special agro-industrial processing zones across the three senatorial zones. So the current challenges we have with our farmers, losing their produce because of lack of storage and lack of processing will end. Indeed, our plan in the agriculture sector will see us in deploying technology. So we have a program beyond the special agro-aligned processing zones. We're going to deploy technology as a system for agricultural transformation. Okay, what does that mean? We are today, we're not producing at the scale that we want to produce. There are three critical objectives that we have in our agriculture sector. First of all, will be to feed Enuwu, to make sure that we guarantee food security in Enuwu. The second will be to become the food basket of the nation. What happens at that? We also do not want to allow our assets' production to waste. We want to add value to them. We want to be able to export them. To want to create a lot of economic activities in that sector to help we achieve this. We're going to deploy technology. First of all, how do we scale our production? Part of the challenges we have in this sector is also a lot of our land assets are dormant and we have friction with investors going to interface with the communities. So part of what we want to do, working with the state House of Assembly, would be to harmonize our land tenure system such that allows government ownership of those lands and we can in turn lead them to prospective investors who would come in and develop in a large scale our agricultural projects. In deploying technology as a system for transformation in that sector, we're going to do a couple of things. The first is that the current manual and pipeline system we use to cultivate will end. We're going to create a platform where farmers can, through using that platform, hire tractors and machinery to increase their cultivation. Just like what we do today, where we sit in the comfort of our homes and order for a ride to using our Uber app. That is the same thing we're going to create in our taste, what we refer to as taste. So what we're going to do is develop apps that allow farmers by push of a button. You have the tractors you need, you have the machineries you need to be equipped. We're also going to deploy the same system for our extension services. And indeed, we have a program that is already going on, but we're going to adopt that. The e-wallet. That is a system also that allows us to track the high-yielding, disease-resistant, and drought-tolerant seeds that we're going to give out to those farmers. We're going to be able to track it and to be sure that it gets into the hands of those that need them. We have the end farm. The end farm also allows us to address the challenges the farmers have with getting to the end users. On that platform, we'll be able to bring in the farmers and the buyers of their produce in the same platform where they can all trade. So again, technology is going to play a major role. Don't forget, I've mentioned earlier that technologies are bundles of possibilities and we are not going to grow without deploying them in our various growth productivity sectors. Again, we have our A, our output, the output target we expect from our activities in the agriculture sector would be for agriculture to at the minimum contribute a minimum of ten billion dollars in our GDP. That will come from these robust programs that we have mentioned. We also have the new sector that we're going to create. That is the energy and mineral resources sector. In the energy and mineral resources sector, you might be wondering, how does that impact on you? That is indeed a green area for us in Enuwu State, but it is one that we want to do what we found. We want to get it active. We want to get it productive. As you know, Enuwu State is blessed with a lot of mineral and natural resources. Unbeknown to a lot of people, we ought to be an oil-bearing and producing state. We do have several oil fields. We have one that is co-located with other states, but we have those that are also exclusively owned by Enuwu State. We have the OPL nine-one-six that is already producing. OPL nine-one-six has currently thirteen wells that are producing. And the only state benefiting from that production today is Anambra State. But the field has a lateral formation and it has its roots into Enuwu. So there is no reason why Enuwu should not benefit from OPL nine-onse. So our pledge to Enuwu is to ensure that within one year of our administration, that we'll make Enuwu State an oil-bearing state. We also have three gas fields that are exclusively owned by Enuwu. We have OPL nine-one-four, we have OPL nine-on-five, and we have OPL nine-on-seven. We're going to work with the investors to commence immediately the exploitation and exploration of this field. Enuwu, again, as I said, have a lot of mineral resources. A lot of it we hold underground and we're yet to ascertain the right quantity of these resources. Our job would be to conduct a geospatial mapping within the very few months of our administration to ensure that we ascertain the quantity of these minerals that are located across Enuwu State. We have jigsaw, we have alum, we have limestone, we have clay minerals, we have kaolin, we have ironstone, we have glass sand. These are resources that would be able to spark off this industrial revolution that we're talking about in Enuwu State. The sort of economic activities that would be generated from these resources that we have would be humongous. And again, we talked about, despite the global and national economic outlook, that we are here at what, standing at the threshold of issue. And we want to effectuate, want to accomplish an unprecedented socioeconomic growth in Enuwu State. So Esima, this is my home. I feel comfortable being here. I am indeed the best partner to have in this journey. I am the best partner to work together with you to solving the challenges that growing Enuwu's economy requires. So we, you may be wondering, how are we able, what infrastructure do we have in place to accomplish all these laudable programs and development plans that I've mentioned? We are not unmindful of the interventions that we need in order for us to provide that enabling environment. So if we're talking about having a special agro-aligned processing zones in our three senatorial zones, it means by implication, we must build roads. We must have access roads to the SAPZES. We must ensure that we have twenty-four-seven electricity. We must also ensure that we have water. So we are not unmindful. Don't forget that we have said that this growth would be achieved through government-enabled but private-sector-driven programs. So we're going to make sure, and we spoke at length about the desire we have to de-risk this investment flow. So at the minimum, we must provide those basic infrastructure for us to be able to grow our economy. We're also not unmindful that there will be need for us to also have a multimodal transportation system so that we don't have so much concentration on our own transport. So we're going to be thinking about building light rails, having trans, making sure that, making sure that we explore other modes of transportation that we naturally, you know, a lot of people tend to think that Enuwu is a landlocked state, but that's not correct. Enuwu is a coastal state because we have a part of the state that has access to water. And we intend to develop our inland water transportation so that we would be able to move persons and goods through that means as well. Again, thereby making sure that there is a diffusion, there is a spread, a wide spread of different sources and different avenues of movement in our state. Again, what I have come here to do is to lay bare some of these key programs. But you know also that we have exhaustively addressed a lot of other key sectors which I'm hoping, it is my hope that we've all read this manifesto that we laid bare before Enuwu some few weeks ago and that we're able to get into the phase where we can discuss in certain details some of your concerns and some clarifications that you may need in the sectors that we have discussed here. I'm not sure you want me to bore you with everything that we have written here. I'm sure that you have read them and you understand some of it. And then of course, areas where you need us to provide clarification. But something that I find very important to mention is the fact that as part of the sub-indicator we talked about in the ease of doing business is labor and skills. So we're not going to leave our service, our social services sector behind. It is one that we have to, in fact, if we must succeed in the long term, we must ensure that we invest hugely in our education sector. And this sector will not just be looking at the formal education. We'll also be looking at the technical and vocational training. Because part of what businesses want is to find their labor and skill in the localities where they invest. Because it makes your costs prohibitive if you have to import labor and skills. So we're going to be deliberate in making sure that we have a well-equipped vocational training centers. And that our centers produce those skills that our investors would require in order for them to succeed in Enuwu so that we have the skills and labor, domiciled care. We also have robust programs in our educational sector. We have a program that speaks to catch them young or if you will, cut-off points. This is where we target the age for, feed them and walk into them those civic values, those civic habits and moral values. And indeed, we'll also review our education curriculum so that they would be in tune with modern realities. So that our young people, our education system will be infused with ICT so our young people can compete with their peers across the world. We also have programs of setting up science, technology, engineering, mathematics centers. This is going to be a comprehensive secondary school where our talented young people who want to pursue career in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics will go to. We'll have them across the three senatorial zones. Of course, the health sector is not left behind because we must also ensure that we have a healthy workforce and we have robust programs for our healthcare sector to ensure that there is a universal coverage for assets to primary healthcare. We know that doing all these things will require us to have an institution that would ensure that this objective, as laudable as they are, they are leave us. So we're going to strengthen our institutions. For example, in the area of the ease of enforcement of contracts, we're going to make sure that in our judiciary, that we have specialist courts so that you do not have to delay unnecessarily where you have to, where there is need for you to seek redress against a party that breached a contract. Because these are the sort of questions businesses ask if they have to go to locations. They want to be sure that if I have to seek redress, if there has been a breach in the contract I entered into, whether it's with government or with top parties, that you are able to go to court and your matter will be treated or addressed expeditiously. So we're going to set up specialist courts. We're going to have the commercial courts. We're going to have the family courts. We're going to have the real estate courts. we're going to have the family courts, we're going to have the real estate courts. We're also going to train and retrain our public service sector. We're going to train our people there because we've talked about technologies being bundles of possibilities. But we indeed need people that can also do what, use the technology, deploy it. So part of the things we want to do is to make sure that our civil servants, our public servants are skillfully equipped to be able to operate these systems. And that we're able to deploy the e-governance across all the four layers, whether it's with the, the employees, the citizens, the governments to government and also governments to business. We should be able to, as business people, business owners, we should be able to, at the comfort of our homes, be able to obtain government service by just picking up our device and going into the government portal to identify what services you want and you get that just through your device. So that would require us to train and retrain our civil and public servants so that they are skillfully equipped to provide this level of services. We're again not going to be able to do this things if we don't have the values to be able to do them, if we don't have the competencies, if we don't have the character and the capability to do them. Because as great as technology may be and as great as you may be creative and inventive, if you do not have a diffusion of collective know-how, people who are able to work with you because you cannot do it alone, meaning it will take centuries if all the know-how would have to come from one man. Imagine that. So we will need to have people with competence and character to be able to do this. And please do not let anybody come stand here and tell you, trust me, I will do it. You must interrogate what the person has done in the past. This is not, this is not the time to play politics. This is about the development of Nguu State. So we cannot afford to play politics with it. Ask them to show you what they've done, what businesses they've run to. I mean, imagine that you're going to be hiring a CEO to be at the Lionfield in twenty twenty-three. Is that a position you want to gamble? Are you going to bring a new fighter? Who hasn't run a business, somebody who does not understand even the languages we're using here. You're talking about transaction and how to do this. So the, the position, the position of a CEO is not one that you can afford to gamble with. And what you may have noticed when I talked about our business roots not being so dissimilar is that we have discharged ourselves creditably in what we have done in the past. We have come into an industry that is crowded and that have already been taken over by the incumbents and did what, as late entrants into that space, we were able to displace the incumbents and take the number one position in that sector. So when, and I, I understand that when we talk about how we want to grow the economy exponentially, there will naturally be doubters. Don't forget that in the eighties, when the ruler of Dubai proposed his economic plan for Dubai, how he intend to develop and grow Dubai. A lot of people thought it was a gesture. He was treated like one. He left that one and a lot of people were laughing at him. Nobody gave him a chance. But today, he surpassed that vision. In just one generation, we've all, we're all witness to what Dubai has transformed to. And Dubai, just like in Nguu State, is a sub-national. Dubai is not a sovereign state, it's just a sub-national as Nguu. So there's no reason we cannot isolate ourselves from the vicissitude of going on in our national economic environment and grow Nguu State of our dreams. There's no reason we can't do that. So we have, we're standing here credentializing ourselves based on what we've done in the past. We, the same energy, the reason we're in this and the reason I'm so excited to be standing here before we are talking about this is that it's all driven by service. It's all driven by that satisfaction one derives from serving. I'm at that point in my career as a CEO where you wake up in the morning and you'll be looking forward to going to work. Because you know you play in a space where an action you take may affect the industry. Having a twenty-three percent market share and becoming the market leader, even in terms of revenue. That is where any CEO will want to be. But we elected to offer ourselves to serve you. And we also, in doing so, have pledged to serve with humility and moderation. We've pledged to serve you with forthrightness and simplicity. So what we've asked you to do is that you need to be roused up. You, you need to understand, we have come here to call you to take action for you to see the urgency that we require to be able to work together, to prepare, to begin to prepare a template for a greater Nguu of tomorrow today. Which is, which is, which is why we want to say, tomorrow is here. And I essentially come here today to share my dream with Esima and to partner with her to ensure that we translate that dream to reality. And I hope that as I cede the floor to the chairman, that we're going to have a more insightful engagement. So I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to give a high level, as I say, of my economic plan and economic growth plan for Nguu State. Once again, thank you very much.